Okay. Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Villa Park City Council. I hereby call the meeting to order. Steve, will you call the roll, please?
Councilman Colacut?
Here.
Councilman Mercini?
Here.
Councilman Zimmerman?
Here.
Mayor Proton Miles?
Here.
Here. Thank you. Before we get started, I'd like for us to all take a pause for a moment and keep all of our first responders in our thoughts and prayers as they battle this new fires that are in our communities existing today. They're making a significant sacrifice to help save and protect our communities as we speak. I understand two firefighters have been hurt. We all want to show how we care by offering our prayers for them and their families. In addition, the Red Cross has asked us for help in the form of donations as well at this time. We can help people affected by the wildfires by visiting redcross.org, calling 800 REDCROSS, or texting the word WILDFIRES to 90999 to make a donation. Lastly, we also want to keep those who are displaced or worried about the impact of the fire to their families as well, including our city manager, in our thoughts and prayers as well. So, thank you. Okay. Today I'll ask Mayor Proton Miles if she will lead us in the pleasure of allegiance.
Love to. Please stand, place your hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America. To the public, for which you stand.
Villa Park City Council and staff welcome you to this meeting, and we encourage your participation. If you wish to address the city council, please complete and submit a speaker card to the clerk before the scheduled meeting. Speaker cards can be found at the entrance to the city council chambers. Speakers will be called in individually during the public comments section of the item they wish to speak on. Speakers will be limited to a time period of five minutes. Speakers will also be able to submit comments in writing by 3:00 PM today. Those comments will be read aloud during the public comments section of this thing. Steve, do we have any comments?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to our presentations. Do we have a presentation from the Sheriff's Department?
No, the sheriff, obviously, and sheriff and fire both will be very busy tonight. They've contacted me in advance. They can respond to anything if we get back to them. But I do know that we have the vice chair of the Orange County Fire Authority who could give an update on the fires, and I think they're both active. Our Lieutenant Knudsen and Barrett Hunter are both very active out in the field working right now as first responders. So I defer to Councilman Mercini on the fire authority.
Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor. On behalf of the Orange County Fire Authority, I'd give a small briefing here, or a short run, rather. We received an email update earlier from our division chief, Barrett Hunter, and in essence, it states, "And as of approximately 20 minutes ago, the facts remain the same. The Blue Ridge Fire continues to burn in areas of Yorba Linda, Chino Valley, San Bernardino, and Brea. The Blue Ridge Fire has 15,200 acres burned and is now 5% contained. Ten homes have been damaged, and at least one is a total loss, probably one or two more as well. Approximately 3,000 homes are under mandatory evacuations in Yorba Linda. This fire is continuing to burn northwest, northeast, and to the south. The Silverado Fire has burned 12,600 acres and is 5% contained. No structures have been lost due to that fire. There are approximately 70,000 homes in Irvine, 70,000 homes, and 8,000 homes in Lake Forest under mandatory evacuation orders, including my own sister-in-law who's with us. Thankfully, she's safe and sound, and so is her home. There are more than 1,800 firefighters, 14 helicopters, and additional resources assigned to both fires. Again, my one issue, or I should say, I want to say exactly what the mayor said. I can't begin to thank the brave men and women of the Orange County Fire Authority and what they've done. My hearts, my heart, my prayers go out to the two firefighters that were critically burned. Both are currently, have been intubated and we're praying for their recovery. There have been several others that have also sustained minor injuries, and let's pray that no others. I suggest if you have the capability of doing so, if you have the financial means to do so, there are GoFundMe pages that have been set up as well as giving to the Red Cross. There's definitely a need for it. Todd, I know that you're intimately familiar with some of the aspects of the fire. Did you want to add anything as well, sir?
No, it's trending in a good direction right now in Yorba Linda. One thing we did learn on the staff level, at the beginning of any emergency, it's all about communication, and it's really hard to get good info early on because people are busy and they're trying to actually fight the fire in this case. So one thing we did, and will definitely do for future emergencies, is we embedded a city staff person at the operations control of the Fire Department and the Sheriff's Department joint command. Therefore, we were able to give council members updates every couple of hours because all the citizens go to the council, right, for information. And once we did that, it really improved. So something for us to consider if something happens in the future.
Thank you. One other thing I wanted to add is recently, the Orange County Fire Authority, in partnership with SoCal Edison, approved a contract for the use of a CH-47 twin-engine or twin-rotor Chinook helicopter. This is a very large helicopter. It's used to transport troops typically, but in this case, it transports fire suppression chemicals, and in most cases, I believe it's just water, 3,000 gallons of water. Typically, airdropping helicopters that you'll see will carry about 300 gallons. Well, thankfully, within the past two months, we were able to reach an agreement and get this contract done. And as of yesterday, when I was sitting on the freeway looking up, we got to see that helicopter in action, and it truly, truly saved homes. It's amazing. 3,000 gallons versus 300. So well done to the Orange County Fire Authority and as well as Anaheim Fire Department for all that they've done in keeping us safe, and the first responders, Sheriff's Department, Irvine Police Department, and members of other state agencies. Thank you all. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Shawna, can you hear me? You ready? Okay, go ahead.
Yes, I can hear you. Good evening, everyone. It's been a good month at the library. For the last month, we've been helping people with the curbside service. We've continued that, and we've also enjoyed having our patrons back in the building. So our patrons have the option now of calling us when they arrive at the library, and we will collect the things that they've requested and check them out and bring them outside for them. Or if they're comfortable coming in, we help them find their holds and use the self-check machine. And we have an area where people can browse of popular materials and children's books. And that's been really picking up, and we're also taking reservations to use the computers. So if some of our patrons are catching on that that service is available again, and they're coming in and using the computers, we're happy to see that picking up again. And we also have the cover-to-cover reading program going. So our patrons between the ages of four and 12 can get registered, and when they read five books, their parents sign off, and we give them a certificate of achievement that says they've read those books, and they can trade that at any In-N-Out for a hamburger or a cheeseburger. That's going until November the 14th. We've had a lot of families signing up, and we plan to get some more. So there's still two weeks left. They can earn up to three hamburgers or cheeseburgers in that time. So hopefully, we'll get some more kids coming in and signing up. There are two new faces at the library, so if you have a chance, stop in and say hi to Andrew and Alyssa. They are our two new library assistants. And they're getting to know the community, and they seem really happy, and they seem like a good fit with us. So we are grateful and happy to have them helping us, Andrew and Alyssa. System-wide, the library has started a really exciting new program to address the digital divide. It's called WiFi on Wheels, or WOW is the acronym. And for that, it's just launched. The library is identifying and bringing internet connectivity to low broadband neighborhoods throughout the county. Library locations. The library staff will park a county vehicle with a WiFi on Wheels trailer at a pre-designated location each week, and that will provide broadband for up to 150 users within a 300-yard radius. And we'll also have staff there to answer questions. They're bringing books, they're bringing children's books, and they're bringing job search-related books out into the community, too. So that's something we're really excited about. It's just started, and I know in the next few months, they're hoping to expand it. We will hopefully have more to say about that next month. Had a lot of calls about book donations still, and that's something we appreciate so much when life is normal and we can process those. Right now, we're still not able to accept book donations. And that's the wrap at the library. Do you have any questions for me?
You want to have questions? Shawna, thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you. You all stay safe.
Take care and have a safe week. Okay, council member reports. Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control.
Thank you. May I get that slide? So I have a lot of exciting stuff, but some business side first. So if we can go to, I think it'll keep going. Nope, keep going. And stop. So this right here is showing the West Nile virus activity. The weather is getting colder, which is good because that will slow down the breeding of the 80s mosquito, the ankle biters. But so that's good news. Some bad news, however, though, is, so if you look on this this data chart, you'll see that we have on the part below the actual map, the human infection says 12. Well, unfortunately, we have to update that to 13, and that's for the county of Orange. And the West Nile virus positive mosquito counts are what you see behind each city. So Anaheim with 98, Fullerton with 60. Fortunately, Knockemwood, Villa Park does not have any West Nile virus positive mosquitoes. We'd like to keep it that way. In comparison with our county to other counties, so LA County has 34 West Nile virus cases. Riverside has three, and San Diego has one. So these are human cases. Again, we talked about last time that we are not considered a high risk, even though everyone is experiencing massive mosquito infiltrations. And one thing they mentioned that maybe people aren't aware of is that some mosquitoes might be actually, a lot of people I've heard say, "Well, they're in my house." And they think it's coming from open doors or windows, especially since it was hot. And they actually said that you might want to start looking at things like if you have a Keurig coffee pot and to clean out and dump out the water inside the Keurig, or change your filter in your refrigerator water. Animal pools, any plants that might sit in a window or something, because, yeah, mosquitoes will get in, but they also can breed there, and you may not realize it. You may think they're breeding outside and coming in. So I think our community, we've done a really good job with education and telling everyone to go out and check all, you know, tiptoe, turn, but you also have to do the same inside your home. And so with that, we're still working on education. And so they have put out, Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control has put out some at-home science kits. And so you can request one. We'll put the link up on our website, but it's going to come in a packet like this to your home. The concept is to educate young children. So it'd be perfect for you. Educate young children about the life cycle, larva, breeding ground, kind of educate them. It's also a science activity. It's based on the STEM properties. So for those people that are homeschooling and need to find something to fill the void, this is really great. So it includes, I'll open it really fast. You can make your own mosquito, and I just got it today. Otherwise, I would have made my mosquito. But you get some googly eyes, and they give you directions how to make your mosquito. And the fun part is, is it's very interactive, and you become a junior honorary inspector. And it's an at-home science kit, and it gives you all the different tools to do a life cycle. You make your mask. You go on a hunt around your home. And then it has like a Mad Libs, so most of us know what Mad Libs are, but maybe not the small kids. But it's a fun kit to do, and it gets the kids engaged and it gets them to learn about the mosquito life cycle. And that is $4 from Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control. And then the other thing is, we've had some residents that have asked questions like, "Well, how, you know, my neighbor, I know that they have some stuff. How do I go up to my neighbor? How do I go to my neighbor and say, 'Hey, would you mind checking your water, you know, your plant?'" So they came up with this, it's like a neighbor, I want to make sure I get their name right, an advocate kit. And so this you can also call for, and again, it'll be on the website, or you can just email me. And it basically is, it's a way to interact with your community. It's a way to get to know your neighbors, and it educates your neighbors that maybe they didn't realize that, you know, the tiptoes. So it allows them to be active in the mosquito control within their community. We had one resident that called and asked how she could actually do that for her small community because she knows, you know, that everyone's out walking. And so this is designed specifically for people like that. And you can drop one off at your neighbor's house, put your phone number on it, and it goes over all the different things to look for. Again, it's all about education, and then again, maybe you'll meet a neighbor that you've lived next to for years and you didn't really know very well. So really working on education and getting our numbers to stay where they're at. That's it. Any questions?
Questions? Okay, thank you. Orange County Sanitation District?
Thank you. Got my microtuner on. Okay, I participated in board and steering committee meetings on September 23rd, and I chaired the operations committee meeting on October 7th. All district meetings are continuing to be held remotely on Zoom. And of course, those meetings are available to the general public. I also participated in calls as part of the steering committee, ad hoc committee, reviewing compensation for the staff. As next year, we'll be coming up on budget or the contract renegotiations. Key items that are before the board currently, we're planning for the proposed administration building. The building is now in plan check, and I recommend, when we submitted our, initially submitted our plans on March 27th, it was right about the time that the COVID epidemic became very apparent. And so I recommended that we send the plans back to the architect to review the, to identify any modifications that might be needed to address the current and any future pandemics. And we should be receiving a report from the architect at our meeting tomorrow. I also reviewed staff progress in reducing the use of, or we're also reviewing the staff progress in reducing the use of potable water in treatment processes. As I mentioned at the last meeting, our last meeting, the district currently purchases about $1.2 million worth of potable water, which they use for industrial purposes within the wastewater treatment plant. And as part of the review, we're looking to see, can we substitute potable water, portable water by, with non-potable water, like reclaimed water, or even water produced by the groundwater recycling system? And the objective of this is to conserve water supply in the district, which of course makes more water available to all people, including Villa Park within the district. Finally, the state of the district presentation will be held on Zoom Friday at 9:00. And you can contact the city, and they can provide you with the Zoom connections if you wish to, purchase paid in that. Thank you.
Any questions? Okay. Orange County Fire Authority? Councilman Mercini?
Thank you. Most of the report I've previously given, but I'll touch on just one or two other matters. The Fire Authority continues to do well financially. The chief and his command staff are doing an outstanding job. Our current division chief is actually in charge of the Blue Ridge Fire, so we are truly blessed to have some great people that are representing us in fire services. As far as the last meeting, it was a very short meeting with respect to the regular business, and there was, generally speaking, just routine matters discussed. There were some significant closed session matters that were discussed. Unfortunately, nothing that was reported out. The one thing I did want to highlight was the acquisition of the CH-47 Chinook helicopter, and that's really all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, Councilman Zimmerman, the Orange County Library Board?
So the Orange County Library Board, advisory board, met on October 22nd for our fourth meeting of the year, virtually. And to close out Elaine Greenaway's tenure there, she was very much in a challenging position this year with how to continue to promote the library. I think they did a fantastic job, and they really tried to enable the online portions of the library and to continue to engage citizens throughout the county with county, with activities of the library, even a distanced way. And as you can tell from our own librarian, they were kept in touch with all the latest suggestions on where to move forward and how to engage our residents as well. So I think they did a great job.
Okay, back at you again. City Schools Advisory?
No meeting this month.
Meeting, okay. Law Enforcement Advisory?
No meeting.
Meeting. Villa Park Community Services Foundation, I was unable to attend. Were you able to attend last month?
Gosh, it's been a blur.
It's okay.
Was I, did I, did I go?
Well, we did have a cool event this week at, you know, the Community Service Foundation for the last, you know, a couple of months have been coming up with some really creative ideas about events in the city that we could all do to get out of the house and socially distance and have a little fun. So we had a scavenger hunt this past weekend. I think it was fairly successful. I talked to a lot of the neighbors that participated and had a lot of fun taking pictures. And I understand our city engineer was out and about and got a few pictures taken of himself.
Well, because he was extra credit. He was bonus.
No, so.
I had a few people send me the picture. They're like, "Does this count?" Like, "No, it doesn't count. You have to email it."
Yeah, he said, he told me at the end of the day, he said, "I was around for two or three hours. I only had two photographs." So that was fun. But they continue to come up with things for us to do on the weekends and stuff to celebrate. We've got Halloween coming up this weekend. I know that we're not, we're not able to have our event out here that we usually have. It's very successful, and everybody has lots of fun. But there are no restrictions as far as the city is concerned with regards to trick-or-treating. So I hope everyone will socially distance and take care of themselves, wear your mask. And if you're uncomfortable having people call on your house or come to your house, don't turn your lights on. But those of us who want and encourage it, bring all the kiddies you can, and we'll help have some fun, so. And then Housing Legislative Committee, last week, Steve, Ray, Ray, and John Douglas, our consultant, and I met with the State Housing Department to discuss the new housing element regulations that are being passed down to us in our cities that concern affordable housing. And I can say these requirements set forth for each city are fairly significant, and we all have to plan for it to reach a designated number of units over the course of the next few years. The quantities they're imposing are extremely high and in every case, hard for us, in my opinion, for us to meet, simply because we do not have open land or lots to aid in the endeavor, and we do not have an abundance of commercially zoned areas within our city that we could rezone or do something with. We met with them to review our various concepts to achieve the results they were putting forth and been given advice and direction, which we will now review and work to develop an overall plan that we can in turn present to the Housing Committee. The city staff and John Douglas will prepare options and planning ideas that we'll be able to review hopefully before, in the next 30 to 45 days so that we can make decisions as a council and as a community about our actions moving forward. Because I will tell you, this overall plan does in fact threaten the nature of where we live, how we live, and causes me grave concern, and I'm sure the rest of the council will also say the same thing. But we've got some work ahead of us to do as it relates to this, and I'm looking forward to the creative ideas that our staff and so forth will come up with to do this, so. Bridges at Kramer Way?
Okay, before I go into that, I did just want to welcome, are you all from Orange Lutheran, all of you? Yes, perfect. Okay, so we have our seniors from a government class at Orange Lutheran and wanted to say welcome. They're here for a class in learning about civics and government, and I think it's fantastic. And want to definitely give a shout out to Connor Olson and to Hannah Van Essen. So welcome. And then everyone else, welcome as well. Okay, so the Bridges at Kramer, our meeting was Wednesday, September 23rd. And it was a relatively short meeting. It was really mostly an update about how the Bridges at Kramer Place is handling or has been handling COVID and the shelter. So typically, that has a 200-bed capacity, and so they reduced their capacity from 200 to 156 to allow for the spacing out. They also worked with the Illumination Foundation and Project Room Key. And so they had an issue, and actually, they had very low numbers of COVID-positive patients in the shelter. If they did have one, they isolated and they worked with Illumination. If they did have one, they isolated and they worked with Illumination Foundation and Project Room Key. And they would isolate them in hotel rooms. And so you either were isolated and, and treated and brought supplies and whatnot if you were COVID-positive. Or if those residents that needed a place to stay because they were of a higher vulnerable population. So they also participated, which is a county-run program with this Project Room Key. And so a lot of the older vulnerable populations went into this Project Room Key as well to keep them safe. And we got some information on, on data on what they call is an exit. And so for young students, when, when someone is in the shelter, the goal is to have an exit, a known exit, which means that you either found housing or you were able to exit to, say, a family member somewhere. So they actually had an increase in exits, which is good. And the return to homelessness was down from 60% down to 23%, which is a really great number, because that means that when people did leave, they weren't going back out on the streets. They actually had someplace to go. Their year is calculated from June through July. So they're just now starting a new year or a third into the new, a fourth into the new year. And for us, for Orange County, these numbers are what I'm going to talk about. So they serve 810 in, in the prior year. And this last year, they were down 594, and they believe that's related to the coronavirus. And they also had a 20% increase in permanent housing placement, which is what their goal is. So that's a phenomenal number to have an increase in the permanent housing. And they're going to continue with Project Room Key and then also the decreased numbers until it's more safe to resume back to their 200 beds.
Do they see a numbers increase in the county right now?
Yes, yes. Yep.
Thank you. Okay, at this time.
Mayor? Apologize.
Sorry?
Uh, League of Cities, do we want to talk about that now or at the end? The League of Cities, the conference?
Do that in your, in your report.
We'll do.
At this time, members of the public may address the council on any off-agenda items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, provided that no action may be taken on off-agenda items unless authorized by law. Comments are limited to five minutes per person and 30 minutes for all comments. Steve, is there anyone that sent anything in or wished to speak?
No, sir.
So now we move into our public hearings. Our first hearing is to review and waive the reading of all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda. I will now open on the hearing. Staff, please give the report.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the monthly item that we inject into the agenda to start, to allow us to conduct expeditious and speedy meetings. It basically allows us to move forward without waiving, without reading in detail all the resolutions and the ordinances in specific detail. So we'd recommend approval.
Anyone from public comment?
No, sir.
Okay. Well, I will now close the hearing. Are there any mo, is there a motion on this matter?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, please. Steve, would you call the vote?
Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilman Rosini?
Yes.
Councilman Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Miles?
Yes.
Mayor Pitts?
Yes.
Passes by zero.
Our next hearing is regarding 18-282 Montana Circle, variance number 2020-02, and conditional use permit 2020-03. I will now open the hearing. Staff, please give the report.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a continuation of items that were heard at our last, uh, two months ago. There was a variance request and a CUP, as you'll recall, they were two separate items. Subsequent to that, the, the applicant has waived the request and deleted, withdrawn the request for the variance number 2020-02, which was the setback deviation for the ADU. And he has withdrawn that request. So that item will be recommended that we, we move on from that. So it's been withdrawn. However, he is still requesting the CUP for the, the height of the garage. And I will let Ray Pasqua, our planning manager, sort of remind you or sort of tell everybody what it was again.
Right, thank you.
Mayor, members of the city council. As Steve mentioned, the, the variance application was withdrawn. The applicant had made adjustments to the accessory structure, the detached accessory structure. So the setback would comply with the minimum 10-foot setback for the rear and for the side. So the only item that is still remaining is the conditional use permit, which is to request that a garage door be, or exceeds the maximum allowable height of eight feet, one inches. From the previous plan, it was, it was proposed at 13 feet. And they've reduced that, he's reduced that size or the, the height to 11 feet. So that's, that's what's on the floor this evening for the, the conditional use permit. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Council members, any questions? No? Okay. Steve, do we have anyone here to represent the family or, or any one that wishes to speak in public?
No, I don't believe we've heard, I've heard from either.
Ray, the last time we brought this up to, to council, there was some opposition to the, to the structure. Is there any one?
We, we did have one person come in, but he spoke again, you know, and wasn't aware of the changes to the plan submittal.
Yeah, the, the letter that was received by city staff was shortly after the, the August city council meeting, and it was prior to the submittal of the revised plans.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Any, any other discussion items?
So after our August meeting, the Martins did reach out to me and asked if I could come and view the property and what they had wanted to do. We had a very candid conversation and I expressed to them that I thought that they should go back and try and negotiate and, and think about, you know, what it is that they really wanted and, and, and meet somewhere in the middle, talk to their neighbors and whatnot. So to hear that they've come back and, you know, removed the variance, I think that's a huge step in, in the direction of them showing a compromise. And, and now seeing that they're reducing the door height from that 13 down to 11. I know the Martins, you know, really just want to get done with this. And it's, their boys are, you know, really into this racing. And they had other plans, you know, with, with the building being closer so that they could park their RV in there. Obviously, they aren't going to do that anymore unbeknownst to me. But I just want to say I feel that they're, they're definitely showing a compromise by deleting the variance and then decreasing the door height. So I think that shows a, a very good effort towards trying to compromise with their neighbors.
Okay. Anyone else? Discussion? Now, Steve, procedurally, are we voting on the old to deny everything and then something new? Or how are we doing this?
You're voting to approve the conditional use permit? The variance was withdrawn and is no longer necessary? So it would simply be a motion to approve the CUP? A, as submitted with a lower height than the previously heard?
Correct.
Thank you, sir. Just wanted to make sure we were, we were correct. Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion on this matter?
Still moved.
Second.
Motion second. Steve, will you please call for the vote?
Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilman Rosini?
Yes.
Councilman Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Miles?
Yes.
Mayor Pitts?
Yes.
Passes five zero. So for clarity, the conditional use permit at the 11-foot height is approved. The variance is withdrawn, so there's no action taken on the variance. So that's for the record.
Thank you. Now we will consider our consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered routine and are usually enacted by one motion approving the recommended action listed on the agenda. Any member of the city council, staff, or the public may request an item be removed from the consent calendar for discussion or separate action. Council members, are there any items three through six you would like to remove from the consent calendar? Okay. All right, I think, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second. Steve, will you call the vote, please?
Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilman Rosini?
Yes.
Councilman Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Miles?
Yes.
Mayor Pitts?
Yes.
They pass five zero.
Okay. So onward to new business. Our first item of new business is the approval of the Gala Encroachment Agreement. Staff, will you please give the report?
Sure, we are happy to. Just start it off and I'll kick it over to our city engineer. This is a property at 10731 Vida Drive, Vita Drive, or however, I've heard it pronounced many different ways. So however your preference. They've requested, and we've discussed with them, an encroachment agreement for construction of four pilasters on the city's public right-of-way on that drive. There is, do you have a picture of that we can show? I think we'll pull it up here so you can. You'll see the four white blocks, if you will, on Vita Drive. That's what's shown there. So this, in essence, is the request. I'll let the city engineer go into it. I did want to say that the applicant, or the Mr., it's, it's actually Dr. Rajiv Galla called me. He's an OBGYN and he is on duty, doing on-call. But he has volunteered to break away from that if we would like to get him on Zoom. I told him since he was on-call and working in medical field, he didn't need to sit on Zoom while they're waiting, but I can get him on if you'd like to. We can, he, he's willing to do that. And I believe he said his wife may or may not be here, but she was going to try depending upon her availability and everything that was going on. But I just wanted to make it clear, he made an extra effort to try and be here and to make himself available. So if the council would have that preference, I can, we can delay for a minute and get him online. He can answer questions. Otherwise, I'll defer to our city engineer to give us some.
Well, before we do that, I'll defer to council. Do you feel it necessary to have the gentleman attend the, the meeting to?
No, I, I spoke with him by phone briefly and I don't have any questions for him.
Yeah, he phoned me as well.
I also talked to him and feel like it's.
Okay, all right, thank you. Ray, Akram, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, council members. The property owners, as Mr. City Manager mentioned, he constructed four piliasters at the frontage of his property. All four were about one foot from the floor line, which is technically behind the curb, behind the curb. Along that street, there is no sidewalks. Most of the, the properties are landscaped all, all up to the curb line. And there are several piliasters which are built, you know, for the mailboxes or for other aesthetic purposes where constructed. So these columns or piliasters do not impact the, any of the city's infrastructure. They just, they are within the public right-of-way. We don't see that there is any impact. And with that, staff is recommending the approval of the agreement. This agreement would allow the city, in case of the city decided to construct a sidewalk or a pedestrian path or any other things, the property owners will be required to remove them at their own cost. Any questions?
And just for the clarity, one of those is actually, the pilasters, actually, the mailbox is included in there. So that's something that the post office is requiring for delivery of mail on that street.
Akram or Steve, either one, I had a question or a comment. How do we review these earlier in the process? So that, I mean, is this part of the plan check or something that, that people submit? Because it seems like we're seeing two of these tonight and they're already built and they're asking for permission after the fact to, 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 to do this encroachment agreement. So is there something in our process that we could revise or do something earlier in the process? I know that it's very difficult for, for Bill to catch everything, you know, per se, in, in his rounds. But to be more proactive, how do we do this earlier in our process to, to catch these things so that we don't wait until they're already built, the owners have expended monies?
Thank you, Mayor. We, these are, this is one of the things we've talked at a staff level. This is, we take some of the ownership responsibility for this because things, they're held in discussions, but it's not been formally included in the process. But we will actually be including that forward, going forward to ensure that things moving forward are done that. People will notice all through the city, though, there's a lot of these types of things done and those are grandfathered in. So I think going forward, we're going to continue to address them as we, as, as somebody comes in with projects, we'll bring those up and that'll be formal part of the plan check review process.
But just for clarification, it's not the pilasters, it's the fact that they were part of the easement, right?
It's the placement on easement, correct. It's not the construction of the item itself. It's the placement of that constructed item on our easement.
So as long as, as, if, if I want to go put three-foot pilasters in front of my house, as long as I'm not doing it on easement, I don't need to come and get approval?
Correct, correct.
Right, yeah. So I just want to make sure for those people, it's not that they built the pilasters, it's where they're located on the easement.
Correct.
Right, okay.
Correct. So there's the picture actually there. It's a little picture of actually how it looks at this point.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
What is the easement, how wide is the easement in front of that house?
It's approximately five to seven feet.
Okay, so had they constructed them legally, they would have had to have been five to seven feet?
That is correct.
Behind, okay.
And the owner is okay with signing the agreement?
Yeah, they, in both instances tonight, they have pre-signed the agreements.
Okay, thank you.
Was there any?
Another question?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
If, these are awfully close to the traveled right-of-way. If there's an accident, somebody runs into those and is injured, does the city have any liability since we're approving construction of these pilasters so close to the traveled right-of-way?
We put a provision in the agreement that imposes the liability on the property owner.
And that carries forth and if he sells the property?
Yes. This is, this is recorded and this runs with the land. Now, that's not to say that the city would not also be sued, because I cannot prevent anybody from actually suing us. But then the liability would shift contractually to the property owner.
Thank you. That's it.
Okay. Staff, any public comments?
No, sir.
No, okay. All right. Do I have a motion on this or any further discussion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. Steve, will you please call the vote?
Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilman Rosini?
Yes.
Councilman Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Miles?
Yes.
Mayor Pitts?
Yes.
Passes five zero.
Next, our second item of new business is the approval of the Barker Encroachment Agreement. Staff, please give the report.
Thank you, Mayor. This is very similar. This is on Vita, your preference. There are 14 pilasters on that street. And we'll pull up a picture here. There we are. She's ahead of me today. They are placed there and then we'll, do you have a picture of the site too? So you can, there you can see them actually. This one, in fact, the owner did, in, in full disclosure, the owner did come in and staff indicated that we didn't have a problem with it. The, and before they were being built. But the concern was that we as staff don't have the ability to approve the use of placement on it. So we had to come to full counsel. So the owner understands that and the owner is here in the audience if you'd like to speak to it. And I'll defer to the, excuse me, the city engineer to give a real brief overview and the owner can speak as well.
It's similar to the previous item. However, there is more piliasters. There's 14 of them. The property owner came into the city and we've requested him that he should leave approximately four feet from the face of the piliasters to the floor line, which he, as you see in the, one of the exhibits, he has them 48, 48 inches. There's a few of them that are 47 inches exactly. But the rest of them is 48 and some on the side are up to 71 inches. And the reason we've requested the four feet in case of ever the city thought of having a sidewalk or a pedestrian path, then we'll have enough with, without, you know, the reason for removing those piliasters. Again, the, in the agreement, they will be, the property owner is required to remove them at his own cost in case of the city needs to get in into that easement or part of the right-of-way. There's no impact on any of the city's infrastructure. And with that, again, we recommend the approval of those encroachment agreement with the property owners.
So again, the owner's in the audience here with full copies of plans, I see. Okay.
Are there any questions from council at this time?
I have a question, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Sir, if you could step forward?
Sir, if you could step forward. Beautiful house.
Thank you.
Well done. Is this a house that you're going to reside in?
That's the plan.
Okay, and you yourself are going to reside there, not somebody else? I just want to make sure you're with a developer or something like that.
I own it and building it myself.
Okay, all right, well, looks nice, compliments to you and just wanted to kind of get a little more understanding of what your plans were, what you're thinking of doing and like the colors. I'm partial to those and.
Just got painted yesterday.
Very, very nice job. Thank you, that's it.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay, we've had front yard fences come up before the council and in the past. And it's my understanding that we have an ordinance that prohibits front yard fences. This, this isn't just pilasters, this has horizontal elements, it's basically a fence. Does this comply with that ordinance?
Sorry, I mean, the city planner is not, he just left. But my understanding, he's, the city planner reviewed it. He is aware of what has been built and he had no, no concerns regarding that.
Well, maybe I'll address the question to the city attorney. Don't we have an ordinance?
Yeah, my understanding is it prohibits certain types of fences and certain heights and that this is allowed, this type of split rail.
This is a lot.
That's my understanding, yes. Off of memory.
Pardon?
Off of my memory. I can look real quick though and, and we can continue this one to make sure and go to the next item and I can check it real quick if you wish.
Please.
Yep.
Yeah, he's gonna, he suggests that we continue and while he looks it up, okay.
Ask my question. Akram, is, is this just concerning the pilasters? What about the, the, the wall that's built on the other side there? Is that, is that also in the right of way or is?
No, that's, the wall is not, no, right.
It's not within the public right of way. It's at his property line.
So it's just the pilasters that run around the front of the house?
That is correct.
The, the front end side, I guess it kind of swerves around.
Matt, do you have anything you want to add to this as homeowner?
I just went around the city to get an idea because of the height and what they are. And I found a bunch that are on the curb or three feet off. That's how we came with our number and where I placed them. Because there, there's a hundred of them around the city, probably not a hundred, but, and that's how we came up with the depth that we went. And I know, I understand that they are grandfathered in now, but when we were building it, we, for reference, went around the streets and found other ones.
Is this your first home that you've built?
A second, but this extensive first, yes.
It's been a lot of work. I've, I've seen it kind of from the start and go all the way up. So it's, it's a great improvement to that property and we appreciate that.
Jungle before.
How tall is the fence, the taller fence behind the pilasters?
Six feet when you're standing up at elevation grade from the house. That's the side one. The side one.
Yes.
I know you said you went around the city and looked and I can appreciate that. But I, I would just like to say for the record that we do have very capable staff. And so in the future, I, I would recommend that you consult with them instead of driving around and making your own decisions on, on depth and whatnot.
One hundred percent.
Mayor, if you will, so they're allowed up to three and a half feet high and they can't be chain link, plywood, smooth face block and they have to be able to, you have to be able to see through them. So that's what I was saying, a split rail is okay.
Okay, good, thank you.
And no fiberglass. No, I'm sorry, would you say what was? No, no chain link, plywood or fiberglass or solid block.
What are the rails made out of?
It's what, two by sixes.
Well, that's, okay, I, yeah, all right. Yeah, but would still be okay, yeah, all right.
Anything else, council?
All the high school students are getting very thorough analysis of fence law.
Anyone else write in from the public, Steve?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay. All right, thank, thank you for coming down. We appreciate that. Do I have a motion on this matter?
Move to approve.
All right.
I just moved to approve.
Okay. Move in a second. Steve, will you call the vote, please?
Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilman Rosini?
Yes.
Councilman Zimmerman?
Yes.
Councilman, or Mayor Potem Miles?
Yes.
Mayor Pitts?
Yes.
Passes five zero. Mayor, could I say one more thing for the record? Just, somebody had mentioned grandfathering in and there are a number of instances, instances throughout the city of this. But whenever anybody puts something on city owned property or a city owned property right, they never gain vested rights in that regard. You cannot, it's called adversely possess city property. Private property you can. If you squat on something for five years and pay the taxes and use it and the person doesn't complain, it becomes your property. That does not apply, apply to governmental owned property. So whatever rights the city has, the city has those rights, no matter what anybody does. And also, most people don't know, you actually generally own the fee title to the middle of the street. It's usually an easement that the city got from a track map. So technically, yeah. Not that you should put anything in the middle of the street, that's not why I say that, but that's just a little backdrop.
Well, I like, I, I appreciate the fact that we're going to review our process so that we don't have a lot of these come up later on down, down the road and that people don't, you know, just assume everything is okay and go build something without checking with the city and, and our planners and also our building inspectors. So I think this will be a good, good, good opportunity to revise process, okay? Our final item of new business is opening, is opening the thirty day public commitment period for the city of Villa Park Hazard Mitigation Plan. Staff, please give the report.
Thank you, Mayor. This is something that's required, we're required to do. I will kind of hand it over to Marousse or Akram, I'm not sure which one of you. But they'll basically outline the, the item today.
Okay. In order to be eligible for FEMA pre-disaster mitigation and hazard mitigation grant program, the city must have a local hazard mitigation plan adopted. Fortunately, the city applied for a grant and was able to receive it to fund the preparation of this, the local hazard plan for the city of Villa Park. And the intent of the plan is to ensure that the local agency is aware of the hazards and vulnerabilities within its jurisdiction and to develop strategies to minimize these constraints and coordinating with the state and other related agency. We did, the city council awarded a contract with Engineering Solutions Services to prepare this plan. And they have prepared a draft plan, which is now is available for, for review by the council and the public. And, and that's the purpose of to authorize the thirty day notice to, to review. We have with us here, the, from the engineering services solution, Sudhi Soshia is the principal and also her associate Gary Sturdivan. And they will provide us with a small presentation of what the plan and what is included in, in that plan.
Okay.
With that, Sudhi or, or Gary?
Thank you.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council. We've prepared this plan for you, draft plan, to enhance what you're already doing. This was a small, or is, is a small city. So the plan is kind of proactive and it's only natural hazards. Does not do anything for manmade hazards or terrorist events or anything like that. FEMA doesn't even look at it. So once this has gone through its thirty day period for public comment, we can make changes to the document. The, the document won't be approved by the city council until the state of California Office of Emergency Services has approved it and they send it to FEMA. And then FEMA approves it and gives you a letter saying that it's approved by FEMA, pending adoption by your local government agency. So that's when the city council really approves a hazard mitigation plan. I've done at least fifty hazard mitigation plans and I would say ninety eight percent of them have changes from Cal OES and about seventy percent of them have changes from FEMA. They don't like that word or something of that sort or that, this word might fit better. So that's what this document is. Go ahead, thank you. So what is a hazard mitigation plan? You're going to see this kind of repeat a little bit, but a hazard mitigation, local hazard mitigation plan is your city and your city alone. So it doesn't go outside of your jurisdictional boundaries. It, the city needs the HMP, the LHMP, to obtain post and pre-disaster mitigation money. FEMA grants, grants to write hazard mitigation plans. But if you don't have one that's in a play, in place, then you cannot ask for more grants after a disaster. You can't ask for grants before a disaster. You're not eligible for those. You have to have this document in place and it has to be redo, revisited every five years. So that's by, by law. That's what the, the plan is doing for the city. So if you're seeing things after a disaster, a presidential declaration, and say it's a flooding event or a fire event, how can I, how can I prevent this from happening again? That's automatic grants, automatic grants if you have this in place. So if, I deal a lot with water agencies, so I always, I'll use this analogy. If I have a treatment plant up in a canyon and a fire comes along and doesn't hurt my treatment plant, but the winter storms come and does a million dollars worth of damage and you get a presidential declaration, FEMA will come in and put your, your treatment plant back as it was. But I can look up in that canyon and think, oh, if I put a diversion wall up there to stop this from happening, happening again, that's worth one million dollars. That's an eligible project and you can get automatic funding for that. So after every disaster happens in your city, someone should go out and see, okay, what can we, how can we prevent that again? And write those grants every time. And those are automatically done. Automatic grants. So a hazard mitigation plan works by getting input from the community, from staff, getting other agencies to review the document and look at it. And most agencies kind of look at it and go, okay, you know, it's similar to the one I have. And we had city staff involved in it and it's come to the city council. We've had the, the city manager involved in some of the meetings and some of the faces here, I see. So that's how it's, it's worked on and looking at those natural hazards and how we can prevent them. So you're identifying them and then you're saying how I can mitigate each one of those. So the ones that we chose and the, and the staff chose is earthquake, wildfire, and those are the two, or the top ones, the top two, and flooding. Those are the biggest things to this city. Climate change has to be included. That's a requirement by FEMA. That's a federal law that you have to include climate change. Windstorms and are not necessarily expended from the, a document or not required by law, but dam inundation is. So you're, you're lucky, there's several dams that go clear up to the Seven Oaks Dam in Highland that protects this city. It would take a catastrophic failure on multiple dams to flood the city and then it's in the lower areas. The reason we, we put flooding is the low part of, of the city is in a flood plain, a hundred year, five hundred year flood plain. And the city manager was talking about some of the streets get flooded and the pipes could be enlarged and that's what we put in, in the document. Maybe enlarging that flood control system, carrying it out to the river. So, but any of the projects that you see in this document are not in stone. You don't have to do any of them, okay? So I got the hazards and LHMP's funding is seventy five twenty five. So your portion of this document was twenty five percent of the total cost. FEMA pays the seventy five percent. In a natural hazard, when you have an HMP in, in place, it's easier to get funding from FEMA with a presidential declaration, but also FEMA pays seventy five percent of your damage. The state of California pays twenty five percent of the seventy five percent that's left over. So that's a benefit to the city, to any organization. Go ahead. So like I said, it goes to Cal OES first. That's its first stop after the thirty day comment period. We've made changes after that, we'll make changes after those comments are made. And if they need to be, not necessarily every comment is going to be included, but it's included in the attachments, you know, that, explaining why we didn't use that particular comment. So once the thirty days is up, then it goes to Cal OES. Cal OES reviews it, we make the changes, goes to FEMA, we make those changes and it comes back to you. So I've explained pre-disaster and post-disaster and presidential declarations. Everybody know what a presidential declaration is? Okay, cool. Go ahead, thank you. I've talked about the pre, pre-mitigation and, and funding for hazard mitigation and pre and post-disaster. Now, the pre-disaster is anytime that there is a presidential declaration in the state of California, it opens up a pot of money, you know, that it is available to all entities in the state of California that are government entities, water districts, special districts, cities, counties. And they can apply for funding for a project. There's other BRIC that is a new program that just started called BRIC. And that is nationwide, so you can also do that. But if you don't have a hazard mitigation plan in place, you're getting from them, you can't apply for them. Go ahead. So this document helps protect the city residents by identifying those hazards and how can we mitigate them. Helps protect critical infrastructure, your streets, falling trees, some of the things that we identified. Brush, clearing brush away from track homes or in, in areas where brush is really prevalent from city owned or other properties, county owned properties to get that brush away. So you can write grants for that to, to help clear a defensible path around properties. You don't have much in the, the fire area, but earthquake is a big thing for this area. And that's why it's one of the number one hits is an earthquake. We're in Southern California and we have lots of faults that aren't even identified until they break. You know, and then we find out, oh, there's one there. So it helps, you keep your reserve funds too. In an emergency, you're going to use emergency funds from the city, but you'll be reimbursed for those emergency funds on a presidential declaration. Go ahead. No, you didn't go, oh, there we go. One back, one back. Or forward. Again. Okay, there is the ones that we identified in the hazard mitigation plan. And we come up, came up with mitigation for all of those on some level or another. Earthquake, a lot of it was this building here and being retrofit to withstand a bigger earthquake than what it is. The drought is not so much a your entity of using drought funds or supplying water because another entity supplies water to the residents of Villa Park. But helping out to educate the public on how to conserve water and maybe other things that can help the water district. So that's, that's some of the things in there. As I said, FEMA funds are seventy five percent, so they'll pay seventy five percent of every project that is fundable. Orchard Del Water District in Whittier, Whittier is just receiving a five point five million dollar grant to replace a reservoir because it, that we've worked on for close to three years to get that funded. But we found out today it's going to fund. So those are the things that, some of them have dollar amounts attached to them. I'm sure you know that and, and others don't, you know. So like I said, all of, all the grants are seventy five twenty five percent. So you have a twenty five percent match. But if you get into disasters, then it's a. But if you get into disasters, then it's a seventy-five percent FEMA, twenty-five percent the state of California, seventy-five percent of that, twenty-five percent of the state of California. Is there any questions?
I have a question.
Yeah, sure.
You talked about, uh, man-made hazards, so we have a high-pressured gas line that goes down along where the Wanda Green Belt is. Is that considered a man-made hazard?
That is a hazard that you don't own and you can't control. We did identify it, the, the Kinder Morgan pipeline. We did identify it, but it's right on the boundary, right on a boundary line, and it's, we really couldn't see any mitigation factors on there other than moving it out, completely out of your city boundaries, you know, or off the edge of it. If something were to happen to it and you could identify homes that needed to be further away or public infrastructure that needed to be further away, then yes, you could still write it even though it's not identified in the plan.
So can you give an example of a man-made hazard?
A man-made hazard is disgruntled employee or disgruntled public that decides to come in and do damage. Okay? That would be a man-made hazard. So terrorist events, we, we don't include because they're not even looked at. So anything that a man-made female, male could damage is not covered.
And then, um, so it says there's no fiscal impact for us, but, so are you writing the grants?
We can at the, at the appropriate time when the grants come up.
So then is that where like a service fee, there'd be a charge, or is...
Yes.
Okay.
You can have us do it, you could, in all fairness, have other consulting agencies do it. You can do it yourself. It starts with a, what's called a, a notice of interest, you know, that I'm going to write a grant or I have a project in mind, and you write a simple NOI and submit that to Cal OES, and they go, oh, I like that. The staff at Cal OES says, oh, I, I like that. We want an application. Then application, you're dealing with real figures. This document does not deal in real figures either.
And then, um, Steve, is this our first mitigation plan that we've ever had?
Yes.
Oh, it is? Okay, so this is the first time we've ever done this? All right. Thank you.
I have a question. The comments you made about mitigating a drought involved a public awareness campaign, and I didn't remember seeing that in the, the document. I just looked it up, and I see the mitigation for that shows, talks about developing ways to capture rainwater, but nothing about an additional public campaign or anything about...
We can add that in there. You know, that was something I, I think was in there, and it was talked about, and then we removed.
Okay.
So, um, you know, that, that is something that we can definitely add in there, public awareness, public education.
Great. I must've just missed it. I, I definitely heard you say it, so I wanted to make sure it was there. It sounded great, thank you.
Yeah.
A couple of comments. You mentioned flood control on page eight, uh, section number one point eight point two. We have, FEMA has, uh, mapped a flood hazard area within Villa Park. It's a good size of the, uh, anyway, uh, I think it'd be helpful if we're just, uh, talking about flooding hazards, if we identified the location of that flood zone.
It is in the maps, in the flood maps, it does identify that zone.
And that's back further or in an attachment?
It's in one of the, throughout the document, you'll see different maps. When we get to flooding and it's there. Yes. It is on page thirty, or twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine?
And it does, the, the light blue area here in the city, city center show the flooding.
Oh, okay, it's, uh, my copy's black and white, so...
Oh. Yeah, kinda hard to make out when it's black and white, but... By Villa Park City Hall, this area is all in the flood plain, and then south of it, south of, south of the city hall is in the flood plain. Most of the city, um, on the easterly side and the southern side are in the one hundred year, five hundred year flood plain.
And, uh, I think it'd be helpful to know, uh, to provide just a little more information about the high-pressure, uh, gas line that, um, councilman, um...
The Kinder Morgan.
Pardon?
Kinder Morgan is who owns it.
Yeah, it's a sixteen-inch, sixteen-hundred PSI petroleum pipeline, basically provides all petroleum needs for San Diego County. Pardon?
All the way to Phoenix.
Yeah. And, uh, it's, although pipelines are the best way to, uh, convey or to distribute petroleum products, uh, it's not fail-safe. Uh, in fact, this pipeline, gosh, back in the late seventies, I think, had, there was a lot of this conveying NAPTHA burst in a neighborhood in, uh, Norwalk, and, uh, neighbor, the neighborhood was incinerated, and a couple of people lost their lives. And then in, uh, November twenty-second, eighty-six, it burst in the middle of Peters Canyon Wash and, uh, which is down in Irvine, by Irvine City Hall, and they lost half a million gallons of, uh, petroleum, premium, um, premium, um, gas, gasoline...
Sure.
To the environment. So, uh, some more information on that, you know, not just to let people know this is really what it is, but yeah, this is, it's well-regulated and, uh...
Okay.
Kinder Morgan has, does have a good safety record, but nothing's perfect.
No, nothing's perfect. I remember a big one in the Home Pass, Devois area, there was a train derailment, you know, in San Bernardino, and two weeks, a week, I think it was a week later, it exploded, you know, and took out a neighborhood that had a small leak in it from the train wreck, and nobody saw it. You know, and it exploded, so, uh, there's things that happen with the Kinder Morgan pipeline, but, uh, we'll, we'll, uh, work on a little bit more verbiage on the Kinder Morgan pipeline, its location. It's on the map and one of the maps.
Yeah, people ask, and, you know, what's this all about? Cause she, it's, it's marked on the surface, as you go down Wanda.
Yes, it is. It's always, they do a very good job of marking their pipeline.
Yeah, but people wanna know what, what is this?
Yeah.
Okay. That'll be it.
Just one comment. I mentioned to Steve that there was one typo on page thirty-five, otherwise I wanna thank you for the document, a well-written document, and I appreciate having the information compiled. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I meant to add that as well, it's very well-written, I wanna thank you, thank you.
Steve, any comments from the public or anyone wishing to speak on this matter? Okay. Do I, uh, do I have a motion on this or any further discussion?
I'm happy to move it.
And second.
Second, Steve call the vote, please.
So just for clarification, that is a motion, a second, to include the additional verbiage that Councilman Colacott asked about the Kinder Morgan. That'll be the motion.
And the typo as well.
And the typo is already picked up, so... All right, so that would be the action, okay. Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilman Rosini?
Yes.
Councilman Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Miles?
Yes.
Mayor Pitts?
Yes.
Passes five zero.
Now we'll discuss the city manager report. Steve?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. This is the monthly annual, monthly report that I give you. Uh, a couple items I would just like to highlight. We do get a number of questions. While we are not having, uh, an election, um, uh, for city council, there is still an election, and all residents of Villa Park have the right to vote. Uh, there is a voting drop box here, right out City Hall. Uh, they can also drop in, in the mailbox, uh, and they can return by postal, and the, the, the closest live spot is at Handy, on Handy, at the school district headquarters. So if someone in Villa Park wants to do it in person, and there are people that are asking, uh, all the time where to go, it would be at the, uh, right off of Cotella there, uh, the Handy, Handy, um, headquarters there on Handy.
Fourteen oh one Handy Street.
Fourteen oh one Handy. And then I would also, we get a number of questions. For clarification, the ballots that are dropped in the drop box are picked up every day, once a day, at a rotating schedule so that nobody can know exactly when they're gonna be picked up and follow them and take action. So they are rotating the schedule, and we are not privy to that schedule, so I don't know when it is, but at some point during the day, it is picked up. At, on eight o'clock on November third, it will be picked up specifically at eight PM, and anything, and the lockbox will be locked, so no ballots will come in after that fact. The registrar voters has these, has, um, they have a very secure system. I would also want to reiterate that the sheriff is actively involved and has a security plan, uh, with, um, the voting system and the in-person. So the sheriff and at all, not just Orange County, but all counties up in California, they've been working, um, rather feverishly over the last month or two to ensure that there is a safe, uh, election process and that that occurs. So I just wanted to clarify that, and I see Councilman Zimmerman's asking a question here.
No, I just wanted to add, to tack on that as you deposit your ballot in the box, you can actually track it. You'll see, we deposited ours, and then it was picked up at midnight, and they came in, and then you can see when it's been tallied, and, and it counts, it's fantastic, it's very reliable, so it's, uh, it's really reassuring to see that, um, is all in the system and you can see it taking...
And I would also, while I encourage everyone to vote, I wanna make sure that people know they cannot drop their ballots in City Hall and ask us to put them in the box for them. That's a no-no, we won't do it, uh, and we're not being discourteous or any disrespectful because we don't have the right to do it, it's their ballot, not ours. So that is gotta go from them to the drop box. We would encourage all, everyone to take the opportunity to vote, uh, so we wanted to make sure that people have that, uh, clarification. The other thing I would wanna clarify is that, uh, we just talked about, and I should've mentioned it earlier, FEMA, the seventy-five percent funding, um, we have yet to receive our seventy-five percent funding from FEMA on the CARES Act, the middle, uh, I mean, not the CARES Act, the COVID issues that we've submitted, so it is always dependent upon funding availability and determinations by FEMA, uh, while we do it. So I think we need to have a plan, but we also need to recognize that FEMA isn't always a guarantee of a straight seventy-five percent just cause you submit a claim. Sometimes it's a little more challenging, as we experienced with the Mesa Henderson Storm Drain. We received a very small portion of what we actually claimed. So there is, there is always that give and take process, I wanted to clarify, but to have the hazard mitigation is, puts us a leg up, at least gives us an opportunity to have a fighting chance to get some of that money. The other thing we are, we are working on is the housing element, like I said, so it would be our hope that we would have something coming back in the next thirty to forty-five days so that the council can have some more vigorous discussions. Uh, the other one, item that we're getting some questions on, and I wanna make sure people know, is the Wanda Green Belt. You'll recall, we originally were gonna have a public hearing in March, and then a special event hit us, and seven months later, we're still dealing with that special event. So it's, it's been a challenge, this is the largest audience we've seen since, since eight, since, uh, February, actually, in a council meeting. So now that we're having them, we will tend to move forward on that and, and follow through. We did have a survey, it's been a year now, we had a survey, uh, so we'll come forward on that, that plan. So that, with that, I've got all answer, timed, and time to answer any questions you may have.
I just have one question about the voting box outside. Is that being surveilled in any way, shape, or form by cameras?
Uh, no, no, sir, there's no surveillance on them, they are not required, it's the registrar voters does not have surveillance on any of them, I believe.
Because there was vandalism in other parts of the country, and I'm just wondering if, if our cameras or other cameras around here would capture somebody doing something mischievous?
No, we wouldn't, I mean, but I candidly, I voted the one, I know the one in Bray that I voted on is in a sports park with absolutely no, uh, no cameras on it, so, uh, but again, I think the provision that Councilman, uh, Zimmerman said, uh, you can go on there, and I believe it requires you to have, uh, you identify whether social security number or driver's license number, last four digits, and, uh, you can track, and it tells you where you dropped your, where it was received and when it was received and all those types of things, so that's sort of, uh, a grid cross-check if people are concerned about having or not receiving it, they can just go online very quickly. If the registrar voters has your email, they'll actually submit, they'll send you an email saying they received it. So some people have registered, I don't, but other people do, so I know that some people received an email at this point. But no, we don't have a camera there, the registrar voters has not asked us to put it there, and they're, they're, they're the overseers of the election.
And Mayor, if you will, I mean, they sort of told us they were gonna put it there, they told cities, we're taking your space and doing this, so it's not something we have any control over. And I do know that in, uh, the boxes in the fire zones, that the registrar went out and they took them, so those ballots didn't get burnt.
Mayor, uh, Mayor... Just one thing on, on the ballot box security. I think it's important to note that we have several banks, banking institutions within, uh, this particular parking lot, uh, and most, if not all, I would assume have some form of, uh, cameras on them, so hopefully if there is somebody who's up to no good, uh, one of those cameras might catch a license plate on the way out, so be advised.
Okay. Uh, anything else? Okay, thank you, Steve. Now we'll, uh, hear individual council member information items and required, uh, meeting attendance reports. Let's start with Mayor Proton.
Thank you. So I wanted to say we had our flu clinic on October seventh, and, um, as we thought, uh, we ran out of shots, we had two hundred, um, available, and the line never went down. It was, uh, but it was awesome to be able to, to, um, offer that to our community, and, um, special thank you to our two nurses who volunteer their time to come and, and give the shots, and then also to, um, Deanna Fashionelli came and helped and volunteered as well, so that was nice, um, to have some help because we definitely needed it. It was, um, um, busy, and we were socially distancing, so it wasn't like the prior years where everybody kinda came in the room, we were very monitored about how, um, how we had them come in.
Just real quick, we started at three o'clock, but at twelve-thirty, we had people beginning to line up for it.
Yeah.
So just so you know, it was very much, um, we actually started before three because we already had a line at that point.
Yes, yes. And then, um, last meeting, we had discussed the Winter Wonderland, and you all asked me to, um, identify some of the, um, things we would do differently to enhance, and so in working with our vendor, um, so last year, what we did is we just had, we had the ice rink, and we had kinda one way in and one way out, and everybody just kinda came and went, whatever, and so, and actually, I was really pleased to see this vendor is, um, requiring us to do this. So they're gonna have an entrance on one end and an exit on the other, so it's gonna maintain the flow, so you can't go, cause you, weren't you there, didn't you guys come? And so you, you know, you kinda had to pass by people, so this will be very, um, timed, and there'll be a limit of how many people that can go on the rink at one time, and they'll have them, um, set up in the beginning, change, you know, get their shoes. Um, it will require some volunteers to be able to, you know, safely move the shoes to the other side, and then they will exit off after a certain time limit. So if we did it in batches of like thirty minutes, um, ten minutes to put shoes on and off, they had time to be able to skate, and then exited the rink, and there's somebody that's wiping everything down, and then the shoes get, they always had plenty of, of ice skates, um, get sanitized, and then we let the second group in, as well as, excuse me, hand sanitizing stations, um, and the fact that it's outside, um, are, are things that I think are gonna help promote the social distance and, um, and requiring the, the, use of masks while on the rink, uh, so that way nobody's huffing and puffing in anybody's face, and the rink size would be reduced, or sorry, the rink capacity is reduced by fifty percent, but they are increasing our rink size, um, uh, as kind of a, um, a perk, so they're not charging us any extra for that. And then the snow, of course, is separate. What I thought we would do is have the same fencing that it was used on the ice rink last year, and that would also separate the fences. So, um, not gonna do the hot chocolate or the cookies this year, um, I really don't believe that that's something that the health department would approve anyways this year. Uh, but we did get contacted by, um, Kimberly Nichols of the Women's League, and she is, um, wants to involve the community more with, uh, she kinda like called it an enchanted forest, and so I think she has different committees within the Women's League that are, um, gonna be decorating some Christmas trees, and asked if we could incorporate it into the, into the Winter Wonderland, and, um, they would be like six different trees that would be decorated and very festive, and, um, that way people could come and, you know, see the trees and, um, and see if other organizations wanted to participate as well, and we'd have our little, um, holiday area, since we don't have a Christmas tree in our center, so that might be kind of a neat thing. And then also, she did ask me to, um, mention that this Sunday for NCL was a holiday boutique, and they're doing it kind of a farmer's market style, so they're, um, she called it socially spread out, but, um, that's gonna be from one to four here at the center this Sunday, and, um, just a my, reminder to everybody who's gonna be trick-or-treating to please be careful and watch out for, you know, the kids and carry a flashlight, maybe something reflective, and again, what you had mentioned, if someone does not feel comfortable having, uh, trick-or-treaters come up to your door, then, you know, please just turn your porch light off. But, um, uh, you know, I'm, I'm excited, I hope we get visited, cause I'm eating all the candy, so please come, take it.
I have something for the grown-ups and the kids, so...
Yeah, I know, so I'm, have to tell my husband to stop eating it, cause...
So, so a question about Winter Wonderland, if that's, if that's okay?
Yes.
Capacity of people at one given point in time in this area, and are we still, we're still restricted to X number of people? still restricted to X number of people?
Yes.
Because of the level we're in?
Yeah, the, the number of, and, and that's sort of in flux a little bit because as we move through grades, it is a little bit in flux, but there are some basic requirements and it's under two hundred people is the outdoor, as long as it's outdoors, so unlike in past years where it brought indoors, I've indicated to Mayor Pro Tem that we need to exclude indoor event here, but externally, we have two hundred people, and how we keep it under two hundred is how, the challenge, I think, that she faces.
Well, and, and I, and, and to add on to that, because of the increased budget, we can definitely do a rotation, or we can have set time schedules of, you know, little kids from, you know, little babies up to say, you know, six, seven years old can go into one play area, and we would have, again, just one way in and one way out and have it staffed, and then the older kids could go, so you could do from four to, to five could be the, you know, babies to three-year-olds and then five to six, so we can definitely, you know, set out a, a timing schedule, if you will, so then if you only have, you know, thirteen-year-olds, you don't, you're not going to show up at four o'clock, and, and that would reduce it, as well as the fact that it's outside and, and it is cold, and I can tell you from experience, viruses don't like cold, stay in that piece, and then with Santa, of course, we would not have Santa in here like we do, but Santa could still be present to hear the children's Christmas lists and hand out individually wrapped candy canes, but more of a, on a walking around and socially distant, so no sitting on Santa's laps, but, but, you know, if the children wanted to be able to communicate with Santa, they could, and that's going to be December fifth from four to eight PM. So hopefully, if you guys, hopefully that answered any of your, I hate having to do this, sorry, is that, everybody's all good, okay?
I had a question about, did we end up, we talked about if we've put a deposit on this, do we, if things go?
Yes, thank you, yes, no, so I do have in writing that as long as we cancel before November twenty-seventh, we will get a hundred percent of our deposit back.
Just, we don't know which way cases go and we're not sure.
Nope, and.
One of the other things I was mentioning earlier about attendance at school events is that while some kids have indicated they do want to be back at school, some don't, and so if we're trying to draw kids out to an event outside, we may not get as many as we would intend, and then we have to think about how worth it, it is just to have had the event versus how many people we ended up with, so I wanted to.
Definitely, and I, I, I'm an optimist and I, I'd like to think with the holidays and interesting families to make the choices for their family on whether or not they feel safe and what they need to do to, you know, take the necessary precautions, and of course, if they have, you know, elderly people living with them, they probably wouldn't, you know, want to participate, but I'm hopeful that people will see this as an opportunity to try and feel a little bit more normal. But great question.
Question, Councilman Colacott, anything? Okay, all right, anything else?
No, thank you, that's.
Okay. Councilman Zimmerman?
Great, so I wanted to start off talking about the League of Cities Conference, which was October seventh and ninth, I have a couple of notes here, one was the OC Division had Jean Hernandez, who's the Mayor Pro Tem up in Yorba Linda, he's also a fellow Rotarian, I've traveled with him down to Mexico to do vaccinations for polio, great guy, gave the welcoming speech for Orange County, and then Solidad O'Brien was the keynote, which is also very interesting. So, the voting element of the League of Cities that impacted us had to do with one amendment to the Communication Decency Act, and I'm bringing this up because I would like to propose in future years that we have a discussion about that voting element for the League of Cities in advance of the, the league meeting, I was really interested to read about it, but by the time I'm, I'm there voting and I've, I've read about things, I felt like I really wanted to have had a discussion with the council prior so that it's not just me voting on this, it's the council of Villa Park making that, that vote. So in this case, the, the amendment had to do with use of social media and the requirement to remove materials that promote criminal activity on social media, and what happened in the city of Cerritos is that there were several cries during protests to start looting at the mall, and these were planned and lots of activity was done on social media to involve people, to bring them out to loot at their mall, and there was a general cry about why didn't the social media companies do anything to stop this, don't they have a obligation or a duty to do something about this, and there isn't, but this amendment to the Communication Decency Act would put that forward, would say there is a, a requirement for them to do something about that. I see two different sides to that and that the actual League of Cities documentation on it presented both sides for cities to talk about, I think it would be something very interesting for us to discuss at some point, but in the interests of not having had the discussion, I ended up abstaining from that vote. So that was my only point of discussion, I, I wanted to add about the, another thanks to the nurses and to Mayor Pro Tem and to Ms. Fasenelli about, for our flu vaccine clinic, my family and I actually go to Target, we have a day where we go and they give a five-dollar credit and we get to do a little shopping spree and we get our flu vaccines, so we've got to alternate, but there's, there are other ways to get your flu vaccines and I had to recommend that, I'm so glad that our city does that, and thank you for your effort on it.
Thank you, but I had a question for you, I missed the Rotary meeting the last week, do you have any updates on the, on the meal program?
Meal program is going great, so we are, we have gone through the allotted money that we have and are using the Community Services Foundation money to supplement the administrative costs as, as we can, what a great program, I've been out, been able to go out and visit very safely, masked up and, but to bring food to people in our community, and we have stories that we've been kind of passing back and forth among Rotary about just how great it is, the, the different, you know, a family who will dress up to get their meal delivered to them, and, you know, just the amount of conversation, being able to stand at a distance but engage people who are used to seeing people out at restaurants or out doing things, but then just, they have this at least one avenue of interaction within the city that Rotary has fifty-eight, I believe, families that they're, they're visiting at this point, and they're split up, I, I have two different families that I'm, I'm doing that I love, they're awesome, so.
So, are we out of money completely, or are we, are we using the, the three thousand dollars that, that?
So the, the report that was given this last week is that all money that was originally allocated is out in gift cards that are being spent, and all of that money has been set into those gift cards and is in process of being spent, and that's as much as I can tell you right now.
Okay. We'll have to look at that and see if we can help, help some more, hopefully. Councilman Rosini?
Thank you, just real briefly, I, I've had some communications with residents, shared concerns about the potential for unrest and what kind of preparations the county and the city might be making, well, I can tell you that we're very blessed in the city to have the Sheriff's Department or County Fire Authority for police and fire services. That being said, individually, it's critically important that each of us, whether it's a fire, whether it's an earthquake, whether it's potential unrest highly unlikely in Villa Park, but certainly possible in other parts of our, of our county, to have seventy-two hours of food, water in particular, medication, your important documents at the ready, and a place to go, have a plan, if you have a plan, you can act on a plan, you should be fine. Nonetheless, I don't anticipate anything, I haven't heard anything from the resources that I have of significant occurrences going on in Orange County, I expect nothing but peaceful protests, whether it's one direction or the other, other counties, that may not be the case, but I would just say have a plan, be prepared, have seventy-two hours of your essentials, have your documents together, don't forget, take care of the, the pets as well, and that's it, thank you.
Yes, this month, I participated in the American Council of Cities, Orange County Chapter Housing Committee, I participated in that committee with Jean Hernandez from Yorba Linda as well, great guy, I think, Vince, you have some committees in the Fire Authority that you participate with, good guy. Anyway, given that the, the housing element update is perhaps the greatest challenge this city has ever faced, given the how it can change the character of our whole community or could, it's something that I would encourage all of the other councilmen to, if you can dial into their meetings, certainly this is a top, hot topic for their discussion for all cities in Orange County, in fact, throughout the state, to get the perspectives of other city officials and their consultants and, and others about what they're doing to try to address this state mandate and the problems they're encountering and how they're solving them. It was a very good meeting, I shared some of the information with the other council members and look forward to getting the draft from our staff and so I can apply some of the information that I gained, but anyway, that's my report.
I, as I said earlier in my update, I attended the, the meeting with city staff with the Housing Committee, and I echo what you say about, you know, this being a significant event that we all need to watch and be careful with because it will have significant impact on our city potentially, so, but I think the creative minds in this room will, will help us to, to mitigate that, that problem going forward. As far as meetings outside of that are concerned, I still continue to sit on various mayor calls on a weekly basis, we have one on Thursday night, which Mayor Pro Tem and I both attend, we also have a meeting with the city, I mean, the county CEO every Friday morning, and then I have another mayor call on, that's, that's a broader than Orange County, is generally attended by mayors from all over the state, to share ideas and thoughts about how we address some of the issues that are going on right now with unemployment and other things in this, in our various cities, so it's, it's a great, it's a great venue to share ideas and talk, and so we, we do talk a lot about different initiatives to try and help our constituents in our cities and also our businesses at the same time, so, but quite, quite, quite busy with some of those things right now, so. Steve, do you have anything else for the good of the order? Todd, anything for the good of the team? Okay, the city?
All right.
No, I was waiting for somebody to say something.
Two to one to the seven.
Oh, wow, they blew that the other day. And, and I want to echo Mayor Pro Tem's gratitude for our students coming over tonight, hopefully it was helpful for you, glad to see all of you, good luck in school, and with that, now we will adjourn until the next regular city council meeting on November seventeenth at six-thirty PM, thank you for all coming, have a safe and good evening.